All right. Good evening, everyone. It's 7:00. It's time for the Bellebrook Sugar Creek Board of Education meeting. Before we officially start, we do want to have a brief recognition. Our superintendent has recently been promoted to grandpa. And so we have a T-shirt for him that he can wear to proclaim that.
Thank you very much. Very proud.
I have some other fun things available as well.
By law, we're not allowed to meet in between meetings. I also went out and did just a little bit of shopping here. I didn't know where to go for a brand-new grandpa. So I went to Walgreens. Let's see what we got here. Got some good stuff. There's so many different choices. Let's see. Got some arthritis pain. New grandpa stuff here. Fix a dent. I don't know if that's for, but they said you're going to need it. Werther's Originals. Try not to unwrap those near the microphone. Distracting.
Trying to crack my dentures or anything.
Word search. This is the large print. And for your large print word search, also a magnifying glass.
Oh, all right. Yeah.
There you go. Those are gifts for you, but also something for the babies.
Oh, thank you very much. Blanket.
You have to open it up.
I need to open it up, and then I have to put it back together, which is probably not going to go.
We'll probably have some help.
Ooh, all right.
That's that courtesy of one Ms. Joanna Kinsey.
Yeah.
Beautiful.
Isn't that nice?
Wow. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Love it. Very proud. So thank you very much.
Yes, indeed. Good reason.
Glad to join the club.
Amongst the folks up here, it's a small club right now. Oh, my. All right. And this is a meeting of the Bellebrook Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and recognizing special events. And not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. So Mr. Liming, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Carpenter.
Here.
Mrs. Dorn.
Here.
Mr. Kinsey.
Present.
Mr. Price.
Here.
Mrs. Anderson.
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Liming, would you please give the treasurer's report?
I have a motion to approve the minutes for the meetings of February 10th and February 24th.
So moved.
Mrs. Anderson.
Second.
Mrs. Dorn. Any questions, comments, or corrections? All right, please call the roll.
Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn.
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Mrs. Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report for the month of February.
We have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Kinsey.
Second.
Mrs. Dorn. All right.
We don't have anything to review this month unless there are any questions on any of the papers that we've included with the agenda for financial report. Several other items to address after this, though.
Okay. Questions or comments? All right, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dorn.
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter.
Yes. Motion passes.
We have a motion to approve the amendment of the fiscal year '22 final appropriations for an increase of $313,818.32 to reflect three additional grants to state and one federal.
A motion?
Some of them.
Mrs. Dorn.
Second.
Mr. Kinsey.
Can you just talk about those a little bit?
Yeah.
Yes. The information is in the blue copy with the agenda that has the circle around the one column. I think it's the last sheet. And so those three are... There's a small one for the connectivity grant we received for years and years from state. There's also state grants new this year. At least, this is the second year for this grant, but it's the first year that it's been significant money, where it's $180,000 for school bus replacement that will cover about half of our costs. And then there's a federal grant for the... Another... This is titled 6B IDEA, so it's a special education ARP grant. And that's $124,000 plus. In total, they totaled $313,000. And the two of them are grants we've had before.
Yeah, the bus purchase grant, the board has approved five buses a few months ago. I think it was in January or so. So this is going to go to the purchase of four additional buses as part of the five. We've already purchased one. And so those are on order. They're ready for them to come in. So $180,000, we were kind of... We knew there was a grant coming up, so we were waiting to purchase those so that we could take advantage of that grant from state.
And the grant covers the price of about two buses for the four.
Okay. I was going to ask there.
So we're still purchasing five? I mean, we've got one that we purchased. Four more?
Correct.
Okay, not four in addition to what we've already purchased.
No. So essentially, the board has approved five, and we have purchased five.
Okay.
Yep. And this is to get the oldest buses off the road. So fortunately and unfortunately, we have really old buses and that have a lot of high mileage on it. So that's probably why we got $180,000, because they were trying to get those buses off the road.
Sure. All right, very good. Any other questions or comments? All right, please call the roll.
Mr. Kinsey.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Could I get a motion to approve 3D, the movement of JROTC instructor Christine Gangware? I don't know if I'm going to say it right. From Master's 30, Step 12 to Master's 30, Step 14 on the teacher's salary schedule, effective January 1, 2022. This is a required move by the minimum instructor pay required by the Air Force. They're paying half the salary. And we've had that program, I believe, somewhere in the vicinity of 12 years. I don't know if you know the exact number.
Somewhere in the range. I don't know exactly.
And it's the first time we've ever run into this. The others, we didn't have to worry about minimum pay, but she's a lot lower on the experience end of the schedule. So they have a minimum amount. And we did sign an agreement 12 years ago to pay at that level. And in order to do that, we have to move her up two steps on the salary schedule.
In the military, they pay half of the salaries.
Right.
So that's nice. It's very nice. Any questions or comments? All right, it's been great. It's great to have her. All right, then, please call the roll.
Oh, we even got a motion second there. We almost missed it.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Probably shouldn't have started.
All right, do we have a motion? Mrs. Dorn, thank you. Mr. Price, second. All right, now call the roll, please.
All right. Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn.
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And the last one is on the hand carry. Could I get a motion to approve the tax rates set by the Green County Budget Commission, placing the rates at 4.8 mils for the emergency levy and 4.31 mils for the bond retirement? And these are the same rates as we had last year. These rates are set by the Green County Auditor, Treasurer, and Prosecuting Attorney's Offices in order to collect the flat amount that we've passed for the emergency levy. They set the millage to apply to our valuation that will yield that amount of money. And also, on the bond retirement end, they set the millage to yield the amount needed to pay the principal and interest on the bonds that were sold in 2004 for the new middle school and renovation of the other buildings.
Okay.
And about twice a year, they update these and have us pass a resolution to them.
Okay. We have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Price.
Second.
Mr. Kinsey. Questions or comments? And last year, the 4.31, that had been reduced to 4.31 last year.
Right. And also, the 4.8 for the emergency levy, at the time that we voted it in, we thought it was going to be 4.9. So it's a tenth of a mil lower than we thought it would be. So it's very good.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn.
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Motion passes. Going on to correspondence. Anyone have any correspondence that they want to share with the board? I had a fair number of comments about school starting times and said that that was still something that we were in the process of making sure that we did a thorough evaluation on that. So that was really pretty much the extent of any correspondence that I received. All right, going on to reports to the board. Mrs. Dorn, you have a brief update on community chats?
Yes, we had community chats on the agenda one or two meetings ago. We kind of tabled that discussion so that we discussed during the superintendent's advisory committee as to their recommendations. There was a meeting of that group earlier this week. Talked about it to some extent, really. And kind of the consensus among that group, which is kind of made up of a real cross-section of the community, parents, civic leaders, older folks who don't have kids in the schools anymore, kind of a real mix. Folks didn't think that having a chat in the format we were having it, that they thought we would continue to get little participation because people putting aside and easing and coming out to the school to talk about one specific topic, that we weren't going to get a ton of participation. So they recommended us, and as we talked about a little bit during previous meeting, a more informal setting more often. So I threw together, and this is just for a point of departure, a point of discussion, kind of a notional, once a month, or in August, maybe twice, targets of opportunity where we could have board presence, have a table, have a sign, publicize. I kind of thought of calling them community connections. Rather than a chat implies there's going to be a presentation or a chat. It's just kind of a connection point. But opportunities to include like basketball and football games outside, you know, being there and present. Definitely talked about being on at Sackett Wright just for parents who are already there. But then also, obviously, Sugar Maple Festival, Lions Club Festival, if they'll have us this year. But reaching out to churches in the community if they would like to invite a member to come and just be present after their service, to talk to community members, local community organizations, Lions Club, Garden Club, Sisters of the American Revolution. So those that you all have in front of you, again, just a point of discussion, point of departure, thoughts. But that's kind of what they came back with. Not that they can't do formal community chats, but no one there seemed very enthusiastic about that idea, even though that was kind of something that got born out of that group. Once they had one, I guess, they had trouble coming up with any other idea or topic to have the next one about. We were trying to keep the topic focused. So this is an opportunity for someone to come and talk about whatever topic is of interest at any given time.
Well, we do anticipate having a presence at the Sugar Maple Festival, just the April... What you have on here for April, the color run sounds great. I don't know when that is, though. I mean, it's sometime in May.
It's mid-May, like it's a Saturday and like... The Saturday before graduation on two Saturdays.
Maybe the 14th.
It's mid-May, Saturday morning.
So that gives us an opportunity to try these out and really could fill a schedule for the rest of the year.
And some of these more visible places like Lions Club, Sugar Maple, I think the interest would be to have actually a booth, right? So the people who go, they're like, well, hi, you know?
And that's the idea for most of these, that we at least have a holding table and maybe a little banner saying, hey, we're here. Or we're under the shelter with a banner saying, hey, we're here, and we publicize it. Lots of us are at lots of these events already, walking around, sitting at the game or cheering from the stands. But to have something where we're there before the game or sitting out in the lobby or sitting out as people are walking into a football game or with some sort of presence.
Do we already have or could we have made some kind of a banner-like thing that says "School Board" or something like that so that it's very visible and clear what it is?
Yeah, we can do that.
If you have ideas, that's fine. I can work on that, definitely. I'll work on it if you have ideas on that.
I thought that was the guys, or some...
Yeah, somebody in the art department.
I can definitely work on that.
All right. Any other comments?
Great idea.
Yeah.
I was writing with our OSBA trainer and advised us to do, go where the people are.
All right. Thank you, Adra. All right, going on to open communication. Do we have anybody sign up? Okay. All right, going on then to new business. Our consent agenda is 7A and 7B, and it includes the hand carry item... Oh, thank you, sir. It includes the hand carry item A6, which is the resignation of Ally Fruoff. Does anyone have any item that they want to have pulled out and removed from the consent agenda? And treated individually. All right. Hearing done. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda of items 7A and 7B?
Some of them.
Mrs. Dorn.
Second.
Mrs. Anderson. Any questions or comments? All right. Mr. Liming, please call the roll.
Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn.
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passes. All right. Dr. Cozad, to the athletic camps?
Yep, so the athletic camps for the summer, recommend approval of the following summer, 2022 summer athletic camps, for youth girls' basketball camp, youth soccer camp, and youth cross-country camp.
We have a motion to approve?
Some of them.
Mrs. Dorn.
Second.
Mr. Kinsey. Any questions or comments?
Are any of these new? Are these longstanding?
No, these are all longstanding.
All right. Mr. Liming, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dorn.
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter.
Yes. Motion passes.
So DEC ESC Service Agreement for 2022-2023, recommend approval of the service agreement through County Educational Service Center for supplemental services during the 2022-2023 school year at $2.1 million.
Do we have a motion?
Some of them.
Mrs. Dorn.
Second.
Mrs. Anderson.
Again, a vast majority of this has to do with our preschool that we run of six classrooms here in the district and also OTPT services to our students that are essentially mandated to us through our students' IEPs. And then also programs that we can participate in if we have some higher needs students that need to go to maybe a special facility throughout the county. We would do that through the ESC also. So that's a vast majority of the money actually is the preschool and the OTPT in speech.
And I had lots of questions on this, and Dr. Cozad was very great about answering every single one. And the only thing you left out was that you said that there was a cost analysis done and to do this in-house would be astronomically higher. So we are saving quite a bit of money by doing it this way.
Yeah. We brought those.
Thank you for all the information you gave me this week.
Yep, you're welcome.
Yeah, it's a great way of being able to share resources and have a reduced expense associated with it. Be too much to hire an individual for some of these roles. But if we can share the resource with other districts, it's a lot less expensive.
And with the subject matter expert.
Oh, that's right.
Why not?
Right.
Yeah, one or two instead of trying to find seven in the county. Yeah. Any other questions or comments? All right, Mr. Liming, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dorn.
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter.
Yes. Motion passes.
E donation, recommend acceptance of the following donation with gratitude from David Wayne Vanderhorst Trust, $20,000 cash donation for Stephen Bell Resource Room.
Wow.
Some of them.
Mrs. Dorn. Second.
Second.
Mr. Price.
So who and what is this? What, how did this come about? What is this?
I received a phone call from a lady who asked me questions about if we were going to make a large donation to the district. Can it be made to a specific area? And, you know, how is that acknowledged for tax purposes and different things like that? I answered all the questions. She didn't tell me the amount. And then we got a notice that was from this trust that, and I think it was her grandfather or something like, someone like that that originally set up the trust. And she elaborated on his qualities as an individual and how great it was he was able to set this up. And they wanted to donate $20,000 to the Resource Room at Stephen Bell. I think they have, I think she has a child or two there that that Stephen Bell.
What is the Resource Room? How am I going to understand what it is?
So these are our highest intense need kids in the school district at that particular grade level. So our highest need students.
Okay, so they got a place to go and calm down.
Well, they probably spent a vast majority of the day in that classroom. These are, you know, intense kids that just mentally, physically are special needs kids. Yeah. And so this is essentially a thank you for a job well done. And a thank you for all that the school district has done for this family. I mean, that's essentially what it is. They're really extremely pleased with the services that this family has received from special ed. And so this is a thank you for that.
All right. Mr. Liming, please call the roll.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn.
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey.
Yes.
Motion passes.
We're going to move to the hand carry. The F on the hand carry, and that F on the original is now G. So the F on the hand carry. School Resource Officer, recommend approval of agreement of Sugar Creek Township for school resource offices for the 2022-2023 school year. And this is really no change from the 21-22 contract.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Kinsey.
Second.
Mrs. Anderson.
And so this resource officer and now Officer Terry is at both, mainly at the high school and also at the middle school a little bit. And so since the middle school and high school are the only schools within the township, we have this agreement with them for those two schools and then Belle Creek and Stephen Bell with Bellebrook.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Mr. Liming, please call the roll.
Mrs. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn.
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
I was going to say, items of information and comments.
Support policy additions, revisions. These are the first reads. So you've been given the first reads in the packet here. We'll come back in the April meeting for the final approval process of that. And so Mrs. Dorn joined Mr. Liming and I as we worked through these policies with our Neola rep. And she asked some good questions and was a welcome addition to that. So.
I doubled the length of that day.
Maybe a little, maybe a little longer than normal, but that's all right. Um, uh, it's a good addition to that. And again, give a different perspective, also the board perspective through the, the planning processes of that. So, but again, if you have questions about any of these, please give with me between now and, and the next meeting and we can go over those.
Can I just ask a question here?
Sure.
Hypothetical brainstorm or whatever, if, if community members are interested in seeing this before they're passed, what, what's a good mechanism? Other than maybe emailing me and I, you know, try to describe, uh, just throw that out there.
Um, before they're approved for community members? It's a great question. We've never had that question before.
I would invite people, if they were to know me, I'd be happy to talk through.
I mean, I guess if they wanted to give a call, we, I'd be more than happy to go through with them.
Very good.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
That's fine. I went through it and the vast, vast majority is, is language.
Oh, yes. I, I also read through everything. Um, very, um, I'm gonna save the line, but that's, that's what it is.
For the most part.
My understanding, all of these came from Neola recommendations.
Yeah.
And I don't know, all or the vast majority because there were legal changes somewhere. We just have to charge up and, and be in sync. So.
Yeah.
I, I read through very, yeah, non-conventional.
Yeah, that's, that's a vast majority of it. It's either OCR or the feds have changed something and usually a lot of times it's just wording a little bit or change this word, this other word that to us or to other people, like it's the same word, but obviously different words mean different things. So get more detailed or more specific.
Yeah.
Yeah. And if people have questions, I mean, we're unhappy to answer, answer, appreciate the question.
Now, when we get these changes, do we get different choices of wording and then you choose that or, and then push it out to us?
That's what we did through the process.
Okay.
So that was kind of, uh, Mrs. Dorn and Kevin and I's role through Neola. So if there are choices, I don't know if we really had a lot of choices, Mrs. Dorn, and a lot of these, most of them were.
This was pretty straightforward. I mean, there were a few where you could choose to add this and for most of those, we opted not to. So they're not even in here.
Yeah. Yeah. But that's kind of the role of, uh, the board member, Mrs. Dorn, uh, of, of that process, cause those things were chosen. And then so I was the board know which kind of what was chosen. So that's kind of Mrs. Dorn's role in that whole process from the board's perspective of choosing that.
That was a good experience. I would, I would encourage you to have just, it doesn't have to be me, but someone sit on that process now and I can get that. It was valuable, valuable learning experience for me. And I think it's valuable for all of us to know that there was a board member.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Did you have a, um, did you want to do an update on a?
I'm sorry, yeah. Um, so just some other things. So I know school start and end times, we've done some, uh, talking, discussion and presentations. Right now, so as of yesterday, the high school ridership survey just closed yesterday. So, uh, Jacob, Will Height and I, and then probably Mrs. Sigmar are gonna sit down and look at those and also look at some routing, uh, more specifically and, and make sure and double check and then, and see if there can be any tweaks or refinements to it at this point. I really don't see anything major that can be changed. And I wish I could, I, I want to speak for the board, I wish we could, you know, accommodate every single situation or request or opinion or thought, but, uh, you know, there's competing, competing thoughts and interest with, with comments. But again, appreciate the feedback. Again, we've taken that feedback and, uh, and, and to consideration. That's why we're gonna try to see if we can tweak or refine any of those, those times a little bit. But we'll know now with the high school numbers of at least people that are saying that they're going to ride the bus next year, you know, that's the best we can do. We probably had about three hundred or so responses. So actually that's a pretty good response rate, um, for, for folks. So again, just because they didn't, they requested it one way or another, you know, they didn't request it. You know, that isn't the official request around. That was just for us to gather information. And so that official thing will happen later on, but that was just for us to provide, just get us some bearings and some, some knowledge of what, what numbers this is. Is it a hundred or is it seven hundred? You know, obviously those are, those are different. So. So hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have pretty solid on that. At the next meeting in April, as of April fourteenth yourself, let's say for fourteen, yeah, fourteen. Are there questions about that?
I have a request though. When, um, we bring that back next month, if you could discuss with each administrator. Because this is the start, you know, X is the start time. Y is the building open time, because I think parents need to know that as well. Like if, if my building starts at nine, what's the earliest I can drop my kid off? And that diagram is different for each building. It's something that you drop off twenty minutes early, some ten hours, some ten. So.
Yep. I can do that.
For transparency and letting those.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
We definitely do that.
Anything on COVID protocol?
Yeah, so.
Okay. Am I trying to rush you?
No, you're fine. I'm trying to, I've got too much paper here. So, uh, information was just sent out today, uh, from the Ohio Department of Health. Again, there's been a couple meetings, maybe we've talked about COVID. I know for a while there, that's all we talked about. Oh, I'm sorry.
I said it first. I'm sorry. I'll, I'll put my dollar in.
Um, so we got a notification from O D H today that, um, that we no longer required to, schools are no longer required to notify parents of positive nineteen cases, COVID nineteen cases, and then also reporting cases to COVID nineteen to our local health departments. So right now our nurses have been doing that. So the way I'm reading that, the nurses no longer have to report that to the health department. Um, we no longer have to notify parents of positive cases. And we've been doing that through our, our COVID dashboard online. So if it's okay with the board, I would, it's, uh, this is as of next Monday. Let's be the start of this, of finish up this week and then no longer update the COVID nineteen dashboard. We're okay with that. Since the state is not requiring that anymore.
Yep. That's fine.
Okay. Okay. Um, so that, and those, that will kind of just stay status quo on there. Uh, people are still supposed to report positive cases at home and do test to play masks to stay if they're exposed at home, not at school, at, at home. So those things are still supposed to be reported to the school district. But that's it of the COVID update there.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And, um, the, the word is that the, the school nurses have been identified as persons of the year for the Sugar Maple Festival. And we're planning to recognize them at our next board meeting.
Yep.
So, and indeed well deserved.
Yes.
Oh, my gosh.
Trying to get a breather for them.
So, yeah, there's any, any job that has been, uh, additional stress, uh, it is school nurses, you know, in this last year and a half.
Right.
So for sure.
Back to regular school nursing stuff.
Yes, indeed. All right, um, is there a motion for adjournment? Oh, oh, okay.
Cause we had four minutes, we could have broken our record. Thirty-seven, I think it was the quickest meeting. So, uh, okay. So on the FEW road thing, we talked about, we need to buy into speed zone monitoring lights or not lights, the measuring devices. And, uh, that seems to be marching forward. However, we heard, uh, the township, I spoke to township today and heard back from a Green County engineer. They're actually meeting with, uh, Ohio Department of Transportation next week to actually discuss the situation. They're gonna do a full review of, uh, the original plan, where the, where the crosswalk is, where the lights are, all that kind of stuff. So, uh, so Stephanie Dogg asked, will we hold off on moving forward, actually purchasing the?
Okay.
Which I would think we stepped away and purchased them, but regardless, she, we'll honor her request and we wait. And, uh, so we'll hold off and, uh, hopefully by next board meeting, we certainly should have clarity on what's, what's coming out of that. So, uh, it's a full review, but I still think those, uh, speed monitoring lights will, not lights, but devices will still play, I think, a significant role in FEW wires because of the inherent nature of that road. So, uh, more to follow on that. And then, uh, in April, we'll have in our recurring safety meeting, we'll discuss that and some other topics. One thing that we talked about last meeting a bit was, um, what could the school do more to prepare and, uh, to protect against active shooter situations? And, uh, as Mike Kinsey had pointed out, I think the last fire fatality in the school was in the nineteen fifties or something like that. And yet we still put a lot of focus on fire drills. We put a lot of focus on, you know, fire alarms and make sure they're working and everything else. But what can we do to protect better against a, an active shooter situation? One of the things we talked about was that three M film, which makes it very difficult to knock the glass out of, of the door. Otherwise it takes ten seconds to like knock the glass out. It's over there with this stuff. It could get you probably a couple of minutes before someone can actually get to it. And thanks to Mike, I can see for, uh, making me aware of that. It's pretty, uh, interesting to see. Uh, speaking of which, I'd like for Mike to attend, uh, with me in safety meeting in April. Uh, he has some good thoughts on specifically this concern of, of active shooters and whatnot, based on some training and experience he's had and whatnot. So Mike, I'm looking for elaborate, not at all, but glad to have you come along and, uh, just listen to police and fire and hear your thoughts on it.
Yeah, I appreciate the invitation. And the, the quote that you mentioned that, uh, a student hasn't died in a school fire, I think it was since nineteen fifty-seven, I should have went with that. Uh, the thing that stuck out to me is just that there are hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of fire prevention strategies in public buildings and schools. All the way, you know, you got alarms, you got fire extinguishers, you got sprinklers, all the way down to what kind of rating of drywall can you put into a room? So, you know, they, they've solved that problem. That's amazing. That's amazing. So all of those layers of prevention, you know, maybe there's one or two very small cost effective things we can do, such as the three M films. We might take a look at something like that. So I appreciate being invited.
And just review to make sure all of our doors are secureable, you know, from, from the front office to each, each individual classroom, things like that. Should never, should never have to cross that bridge, probably almost certainly will not. But God forbid if we do, we want to do our due diligence, uh, to, to any of that. So.
Right. So we're actually, uh, the segment has an appointment with the person with, from three M next week or two, let's take a look at those things. And again, part of our comprehensive safety plan, we routinely, routinely, um, do, um, drills um, with our staff and, and training with our staff. So those pieces are also, also out there.
Sorry, I'm very, very aware of that a lot.
Yeah, it's been definitely.
I didn't mean to, to mention.
In likewise.
I would just like to be, I think we'd like to be better educated, more aware.
Again, there's always, there's always room for improvement and tweaking and refining or adding another layer, one hundred percent.
Indeed, cause like three, four years ago, I came to the board meeting, expressed my concerns. At that time, there was a lot, there was a rash of, of school shootings. And, and that was the first time I learned, I actually had a resource officer that we re-approved, you know, tonight. So clearly the school is doing good things and they're like this three M stuff, never heard of it until a month or two ago.
Yeah.
So just smart things like that.
Sure.
You know, well, you know, be well served and get some focus on, but yeah, not undercut at all. Not even to undercut what we've done, what's been done for fire over the decades. But that's a testament to success, you know, whether it's anything from the, those drywall to the, you know, sprinkler settings or whatnot. So that's a success story.
Yeah, I was on the safety committee early on, uh, in my tenure. And I was really impressed with the collaboration between both Sugar Creek and Bell Brook and their fire departments and their police departments. It was just really, it's a, it's a great group. It's great collaboration.
Yeah, they're very, both very good. And, um, I know Mr. Price said earlier, we, you know, we proved the S R O, um, Officer Terry does a great job and just a great partnership, great partnership with them. So, very happy.
All right. Anything else before we ask for adjournment? All right, do we have a motion for adjournment?
Some of them.
Mrs. Dorn?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Kinsey? All right, and I'm assuming no discussion. Uh, Mr. Liming, please call a roll.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. We are adjourned at seven thirty-nine. Thank you very much. Matt, thank you so much, sir.